Good evening, everybody. We will call the July 13th meeting of the Common Council to order, and I will ask our clerk to call the roll.
Alder Person Rankie? Alder Person Rankie?
Oh, here.
Roat?
Here.
Stefanski?
Here.
Tenorio?
Here.
Weigel?
Here.
Grisham?
Here.
Haas?
Here.
Keen?
Here.
And absent excused is Vitale, nine present, one excused.
Let me...
Oh, I'm sorry. Lysic?
I'm here.
We just assume the council president is here. Thank you. It's all right, you're pinch-hitting Gina. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you are able and join us. It will be led this evening by Alderman Roat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to Section D on our agenda, we have three items for public hearing this evening. I will ask the clerk to read Public Hearing Number One.
Public Hearing Number One, we have an ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map by rezoning property located at 10200 West National Avenue from C4 Regional Commercial to C3 Community Commercial.
Mr. Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. First hearing for the rezoning is to upzone the property from C4 Commercial to C3 Community Commercial, and this is the Baker Square property at 10200 or 00 West National. It's a two-acre site. Baker Square is no longer in business, so as a two-acre site within the Highway 100 corridor, we're just taking a look at, you know, possible future uses. We do have a, we're working, currently working, our economic development team is working with a developer on a potential office, medical office building within that, within that two-acre site. However, if that should not transpire, we just want to do something proactive here, I guess, in terms of zoning, like that of other areas along Highway 100, and taking a look at what could happen here, you know, other types of uses that may not suit the property or the neighborhood quite like how we see it in our comp plan or Highway 100 study. So, what we'd like to do is upzone it to C3, and with that, it would definitely support the future, you know, medical office type of use, as well as other types of uses within our zoning code. It is sponsored by the Alders of the District, Alderman Haas and Alderman Rankie, and Plan Commission has recommended approval at the last planning commission meeting. The rezoning does, is consistent with our 2040 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scher, for the presentation. Are there any questions from the members of the Common Council on this item? Hearing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on this item? Okay. Hearing none, we will close Public Hearing Number One, and I will ask the clerk to read Public Hearing Number Two.
Public Hearing Number Two is a resolution relative to determination of an application for a special use permit for Cobalt Partners parking lot, a proposed parking lot to be located at 23 to be determined South 102nd Street.
Mr. Scher?
Thanks, Mayor. This is the empty one-acre site, grass lot between two office buildings, one actually a medical office at 2356, currently under construction, should be opening later this summer, and to the south is the 2400 Lincoln Crest Office Buildings to the south. The site will feature, it is owned by Cobalt Partners, which is independent of the two surrounding properties on either north and south. This is the overall site plan. What they're intending to do is pave, pave the site and install about 53 parking stalls inclusive of ADA parking. The overall site will be drained, you know, basically from, from the east to the west, and then there will be a bio-swell, which is basically a stormwater catchment area, natural catchment area here on the west side of the site, and that will be equipped also with overflow tubes. So, should there be a rain event or a large amount of water that can't be handled within that storm pond quickly, the overflow tubes will be activated, water will overflow to those tubes and then be released to the city stormwater system. So, the site will also be landscaped. Cross access is part of the plan as well, between the two sites, both to the north and to the south, and it will provide overflow parking. And there is also a lease agreement with the clinic to the north. Plan Commission has recommended approval and received no objections to date.
Thank you, Mr. Scher. Are there any questions from the Common Council on this item?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas.
Yeah, Steve, who's primarily going to be using this parking lot, the building to the north, the building to the south, or both?
It will be primarily to the north. That's where the, where the lease agreement exists. For that, for that clinic to, you know, I guess they have enough parking on-site, but they just wanted to have a little extra, so they structured a lease agreement with the property owner Cobalt Partners in this case. But, from my knowledge, the office building to the south isn't precluded from, from parking there.
Isn't precluded, so yeah, people, and it looked like I saw driveways that go from the south office building to this parking lot.
Correct, yeah, it'll have cross access as well, right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine?
Alder Person Keen?
So Cobalt owns the building to the north of it, and they're leasing it currently?
So, the medical surgical clinic to the north is actually owned by another, another group, not Cobalt. So, they're just, the highlighted grass lot right now is owned by Cobalt Partners. And then there's another owner of the office building to the south. So, they, they have, they have this lot, and they're interested in putting a parking lot in because they have a, an interested person that wants to park upon it.
So then the people lease the building or pay for it, they would pay Cobalt to use that lot for the construction? I was just curious, like, what's in it for them that they're just nice and wanted to?
No, no, they're, yeah, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna lease it, yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine?
Alder Person Rankie?
Steve, does Cobalt own that property?
Yes, yeah, the grass lot, yep.
I see. Do we derive taxes on a parking lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions on Public Hearing Number Two from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close Public Hearing Number Two, and I will ask the clerk to read Public Hearing Number Three.
Resolution relative to determination of an application for a special use permit for a haunted house to be located within an existing commercial building, former Michaels, located at 11135 West National Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. The haunted house will be named the Root of All Evil. It's going to be located within a roughly 20, 24,000 square foot building, the former retail location of Michaels. There are currently about 127 parking stalls on-site. However, with the site plan that we'll get into in a second, there's going to be functionally about 107 parking stalls on the site itself, given some of the outdoor activities that they also want to entertain on, on the property. The property is zone C4 Regional Commercial. It's a roughly 3.1 acre site, and places of assembly like theaters, lodges, clubs, assemblies are considered special uses, so that's why we're, why we're here tonight to, to hear the proposal. So, there's going to be a combination of indoor and outdoor games on the property. Internally, within the building, within the Michaels building, you'll have a haunted house, an escape game area, paintball gallery, football bowling, giant pong, foosball, video games, some concessions. And then outdoor, you're going to have food, food merchant, food trucks, axe-throwing, and other merchandise trailers. It's going to be a temporary use for roughly about, you know, the period between September and November, and then, you know, they're looking at Thursdays through Sundays from 6:00 PM to 12:30 AM. They'll have about 40 employees. The project cost is about $100,000, and their, their focus is, and their emphasis is on safety and security. You know, they will have metal detectors, security guards. They're also contracting with some off-duty and retired Milwaukee County sheriffs, and then video surveillance on the site. The, again, this is a temporary, temporary use, and they are going to have a temporary area out in front of the, the former storefront for Michaels. It's going to be a fenced area with the style of fence shown below, and it will be moved after close of business each day to allow for, you know, access to, you know, within the, through the front of the building and through the site over to the Home Depot property. There are no exterior changes proposed, but they will have concession areas out in the front area. There is an axe-throwing cage, shown on the left. That's the existing building on the upper right. Mentioned earlier, there's 107 parking stalls that are going to be provided on the site outside of that outdoor area, and based on a study from a consultant, they have, you know, people when they come to attend a haunted house, there's roughly about 3.4 people per, per car, per vehicle. Not too many people want to go through a haunted house alone. I mean, not me at least. The, they've also applied for temporary shared parking support from, from Home Depot. They're waiting on an answer from Home Depot. Their process with Home Depot takes roughly about 30, 30 days, 30, 45 days to get a, to get an answer. So, it's just the site plan, just to sort of elaborate more so upon what you've seen previously, but the, the area out in front, again, is that outdoor area for the games. They'll have outdoor games, food trucks, and so on. Within the building will be, you know, more of the, more games in the front part, and then the actual haunted house area is this part here in the south. It's about 8,500 square feet. And then the queuing line internally will be internally within the building. So, as you're waiting to get into the haunted house, you'll be within the building. If you're not outside playing here, you'll be waiting in line to get in, into the event. It takes roughly about 25 minutes to walk through the, through the maze, you know, within the, within the building. There are, as indicated here on the, on the graphic, there are, there are also emergency exits out, out of the building in the rear, and there's also a five-foot-wide safety exit corridor around the south side of the building and west side of the building, and then obviously out to the east here, out in here as well. Just another graphic of the typical maze through the, through the haunted house area. Plan Commission has recommended approval. We have not received any objections to date. Planning Commission was asking for some additional details on, you know, proof of a contract with security services. That has been, actually, the group here is with us tonight. They are actually meeting with their security contractor this evening after this meeting to go over arrangements, but they expect roughly about three to five security guards during, you know, during the event, probably three to start. They may ramp up to five, depending on the gauge of, of, you know, as you approach Halloween or the popularity of this. And there'll also be those off-duty, you know, retired or retired Milwaukee County sheriffs that they're also going to be hiring. The Plan Commission also asked for, you know, confirmation of any shared parking arrangements. They have reached out to Home Depot to date. They're just waiting for a response back for shared parking. Planning Commission wanted to know about a waste hauler, you know, a contract with a waste hauler. They have reached out and they have a contract lined up with waste management. They will have roughly about 100 or so trash barrels within the, you know, from the outdoor area around the activity areas on-site. And then there's also an eight-yard dumpster that will be provided behind the site within the old corral for Michaels on-site. And then, you know, upon the end of this event, mid-November, you know, Planning Commission wanted to be assured that there'd be removal of fencing, cleanup of the site after the event's all over. So, they are planning on, on doing that. So, that concludes the, the presentation, but open it up for any questions at this point.
Mayor Devine?
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Alder Person Grisham?
Yes. Steve, I have a couple of questions. With the application for shared parking with Home Depot, what happens if that is not granted? What was the advisement from the Plan Commission?
Well, Planning Commission didn't, didn't say no. So, I mean, if, if Home Depot doesn't allow shared parking, I think the show still, I mean, Planning Commission was, was basically advocating for approval, and the show can go on. I think the shared parking does, does offer, you know, a little bit added cushion. There is also street parking along National Avenue. It's, you know, it's roughly about, close to 500 feet of frontage along National Avenue, just in front of the Michaels. It's even more if you consider the area in front of Home Depot. So, there is, you know, that added benefit, someone could park along National Avenue, you know, barring driveway areas, but...
It sounds as though that the outside space is going to be fairly occupied as far as the parking that was there or is there. So, my concern truly would be is if Home Depot doesn't sign off on this, I'm sure they're not going to be able to mitigate the issue of patrons coming and just parking in the lot, which could cause problems for Home Depot, of course.
Yeah.
The second question that I have is, you said that there was going to be food trucks there, so it's just going to be regular vendors. They're not required to have any bathroom facilities or anything, being they operate throughout the day, or how does that work?
Yeah, they will all, I mean, as far as, you know, the restrooms go, there will be, I guess, porta-potties on-site. You know, I think it's five total, one being an ADA-accessible. There will be a wash station as well for the public, for those porta-potties. As far as the necessary permits that would be handled through our health department to obtain, you know, proper permitting for those, for that event.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigel?
I just have a question about the operator. Is this a chain? Is it a local? Is it a second location for somebody? I guess my question is, does the operator have experience in this or some closely related experience?
Could you please go up to the podium, use the microphone so we can hear you?
How are you doing tonight? My name is Santa Ritt with Root of All Evil Entertainment Group. We are local here in Wisconsin, located in Elkhart Lake. We, this previous year, we toured the 57 haunted houses. I have about an eight-year experience with being a hon actor, helped building haunted houses. So, this, this past year of 2020, we visited 57 haunted houses and seen what, what worked at some, what didn't work. We wanted to make sure we did our due diligence, and we've put a lot of time and effort to make sure we address everything from security to having metal detectors. We visited a lot of haunted houses and didn't see a lot, and we were so surprised, and we want to make sure what we brought here is something very safe and secure. To adding to your question about the parking, with our consultant, what we've, what we've ran through with our numbers with available parking stalls, we will not run the numbers. We would if we even filled that parking spot. If we had 3.4, we'd have 300 people on-site. We don't, we don't anticipate our haunt running from 6:00 PM to 12:00. We don't anticipate having 300 on-site at one time. With our ticketing, it'll be time ticketing, so it'll, we can mitigate what we have per hours, and we can control that. My conversations with Home Depot, they have, they have addressed to me that, usually with temporary, they usually allow it. It's when it, it comes long-term, it would be an issue. We've also addressed the, the conflict of hours, us operating from 6:00 PM to 12:00. They close about 9:00 PM. There's not going to be much of a gap. We've even been over in that area at that time, and their parking lot is very, not as packed, and it, it, there's always a crossover, especially during the day. Our part, the parking lot that we're considering on-site is usually full of Home Depot customers, and it's nothing we're going to ever gripe on, and that's one thing that we're going to make sure that we close, close our fencing in that runs along that front stretch there, so there, it doesn't impede any contractors, anything coming through there. We anticipate Home Depot usually from that 9:00 to 5:00, when all the contractors and a lot of the people, the business people, that 9:00 to 5:00 time window could, wouldn't really interfere with us. But to address your, your question, sorry, kind of going back and forth here, I mean, we have a lot of experience that we're trying to, you know, I've consulted with 13th Floor Entertainment Group as a consultant as well. They operate about 13 haunted houses across the country, and they've, they've had about 15 years of experience operating events all across, and definitely have their support and backing. If any, any additional information I need, they're a call away.
And then, I guess, one more question?
Yes.
There won't be a request for alcohol service?
So, that's one thing we're working on. A couple of those haunted houses as well, they do operate, serving alcohol in the proper ways, and we've consulted with them, what's the proper way to do it. We do plan on, everybody would come and show us their ID, and we'll give them a wristband, but we do have to go through the proper procedures after this meeting.
So, you will be applying?
Yes.
For beer sales?
Yes.
Is that important to your business model?
It would be enhanceful.
I guess, how important is alcohol sales to your business model?
It would be very beneficial due to the fact that if you go to a Home Depot, or not a Home Depot, Applebee's, Chili's, they all sell alcohol. Everybody here, I mean, Wisconsin's, you know, known for a lot of, a lot of bars in the area, and everybody's looking, they're, we're not, our job here is not to get people drunk. You know, everybody's coming out, just want to have a good time, have a beer or two. I don't think it would hurt.
Okay, but, but that's not on the, that's not, we're not talking about that tonight.
Correct.
That'd be a separate issue that'd be addressed at, at a different time.
Yep.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Stefanski?
Real quick question. When we do something like this, does the fire department have get, get to go in and they do an inspection and everything and make sure everything's good before they're allowed to do this?
Yes.
Yes.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And if you don't mind if I add to that, we have spoken with the fire marshal and kind of, with a lot of what that site plan was, he requested a 60-inch exit corridor to make sure that there's adequate safety exits for everybody, and we're actually consulting right now with the, the city inspector and submitting our plans to make sure the safety...
Mayor Devine?
Alder Person Keen?
For the hours of operation until 12:30, and I noticed for the outside, it was going to be the axe-throwing, is that going all the way until 12:30? Is that stopping when it gets dark? What are your thoughts there?
So, that 12:30 is, we'll stop ticket sales at midnight, but we'll allow that 30-minute gap for everybody that was able to get in line and have a ticket to fully be able to make it through the rest of the haunted house. The, the lighting out in the parking lot is adequate for what we've been out there. Also, our axe-throwing trailer will have adequate lighting in it. It is an enclosed trailer, if you were able to see from that photo.
Oh, okay.
There's two lanes, and then there's a separate lane in between, and there'll only be one person in each lane at all times.
And it's enclosed, you said?
Correct, yep.
Oh, okay.
It's got, it's got metal sides, metal top.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Devine?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Roat, then Alder Person Rankie.
I just have a question, I guess it would be for you or maybe Ed here. What was the capacity that you're allowing in? I know you said you had timestamp tickets, and you said 3.4 per car, 300 cars. How many can be in that building at one time?
That's one thing that we're waiting on occupancy, to hear from the city inspector.
And then how will that, and maybe this is for Ed Lisinski back here as well, and how will that be monitored? Because if you go to a stadium, it holds 80,000, you count the seats. How are you going to count people in this building?
So, with our ticketing system, we can allow that, a certain amount of tickets that can come in from, I could set it from a 15-minute increment to a 30-minute increment to a 60-minute increment. So, we could allow, if we wanted 10 tickets at 7:00 to 7:15, or 100 tickets from 7:00 to 7:15. So, we can dictate what kind of numbers we're bringing in nightly.
And how do you know if they've left?
So, the people, with our site plan, we plan on having a fencing area in all around. There'll be metal detectors that people will access to get into that fencing area, so they'll have to show their ticket that, hey, I'm here from 7:00 to 7:15. They can't come in, if they have a, say, 9:30, they can't come in at 7:00 until, they can maybe come in at 9:15, 15 minutes before that 9:30 time slot.
Thank you.
Alder Person Rankie?
Okay. It certainly sounds like an exciting use of the facility, that's for sure. We've never had anything like that in this location at all. So, I, I look forward to the operation. However, I do have some questions regarding 12:30, the timing was 12:30 to close. It is near several apartment facilities. Will you have music as well on the outside of your building?
Not at the outside. If anything, it, from, after 10:00 PM, we would, we'd cut in the music, but that's one thing that we'll monitor out through the entire season, making sure we keep our noise levels down, and that, that will be one thing with our security will help out, making sure that we're not having any disruptions in the parking lot or anybody loud will make sure. You know, that was a very concern when we first looked at the property, to make sure that we take care of the people in them apartment buildings, because I'm sure they don't want to be woken up, you know, from each night, and that's one thing that we'll make sure we'll address throughout the season.
Right. Another concern I had was the axe-throwing, the axe-throwing. Now, that's really something. Will that be enclosed in the fencing?
So, the, um...
Will it be outside?
Steve, would you mind going back to that axe-throwing trailer for me, please? So, that photo on the left will be the axe-throwing trailer, actually.
Yeah.
So, this, this axe-throwing trailer has two lanes, and it's hard to really see in this photo, but in the middle, there's a separation wall, so it'd be one person on each side, and there, this door will close, so people will be enclosed, and there'll be one person on each lane. So, if they throw an axe, there's no way that axe can cross over that other lane.
Okay.
So, and then once those two people are depleted, they'll both exit, you know, the next two people will come in, and then play their scene. We'll also have an instructor there that will show them properly how to throw an axe. There's multiple different ways you can throw an axe, and it can be if you're one step forward, one step back. So, that's one thing that we want to make sure. We're not just letting them, hey, come throw an axe. We're going to help sure, make sure we can teach them how to throw an axe, and make sure they enjoy it, have a fun, safest, safer experience.
I'm sure it'll be very popular.
Oh, absolutely.
Does anyone ever get hurt?
Not in any locations. I consulted on the 13th floor this evening, we're paying about five, five of those trailers at 13 of their properties, and they haven't had any issues.
I see.
It being an enclosed trailer is a lot safer than what some other places that we've seen, where they don't have security. Some will actually have two lanes with no middle. That's why we want to make sure we address each lane separately, so there's no ricochets.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. Oh, will you be hiring locally?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be hiring locally?
Yes, ma'am.
Or do you have your own personnel?
Will, will we hire locally? I do have a, a professional axe-thrower that will be doing this throughout the season, helping train people to make sure they're appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas, and then Alderman Stefanski.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Yeah, and a question for you is, the name Root of All Evil, is that derived from the nearby Root River Parkway?
Just say yes.
It'll make me happy, that's what I figured out.
To be honest, it makes it so much more fitting, that we actually kind of found that out after the fact.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Stefanski?
So, real quick question. The trailers that you have for the axe-throwing, are those inside the building?
No, that would be outside. Steve, do you mind going back to the outdoor map?
Sure.
And then my question is, noise ordinance on the weekends is 11:00 PM. During the week, it's 10:00 PM. If you have that going on until midnight, you're going to be, have residential stuff going across the street that could maybe be hearing what's going on in the, in the, in the axe-throwing area.
So, the axe-throwing is actually not as loud as you would think it would be. What I'd actually be willing to do, that trailer's actually getting built right now, and if any of you guys had any questions or concerns or wanted to come see it, we'd be willing to kind of, you know, maybe bring it down and kind of show you, maybe have you guys try it out, just to, you know, see for yourself to...
Yes.
What we're, we're anticipating.
I can think of no better team-building for the Common Council than...
Oh, absolutely.
No, I realize, I realize that it's not noisy as far as throwing it, but I'm thinking of the people that are watching and they're cheering and stuff like that, they could get a little rowdy and loud. That's what I was concerned about.
I think it's a couple more down there. I think it has where, it's an outside one.
Am I going the wrong way? Yeah.
Sorry, we had quite a few different maps here.
There we go, is it?
So, it's hard to see it right now. So, where's, where's the mouse flies?
Here.
Where's the food trucks and the others, opposite side of their seat?
Okay.
That'll be where the axe-throwing trailer is. We can move what's in that area with it being portable, the fact that we can kind of anticipate on how the year's going, if that does become an issue. We can move it to the, the east side of that parking lot, closer to Home Depot, too. The noise, the food trucks won't be very loud as well, but that, like, I think to reiterate to what you were saying, Mr. Rank, the fact that we're making sure that we address the noise and throughout the season. It's just going to be, it's going to be a trial and error thing. We don't want to have any errors with that, but, you know, we're just going to have to kind of play with it and make sure that we address it properly. I mean, it is one thing, we want to make sure, because I definitely do not want... I mean, it is one thing, we want to make sure, because I definitely do not want, you know, the mayor getting any emails or anybody in the city getting any emails about any noise or any issues whatsoever.
Any other questions? All right, does anybody in the audience have questions on public hearing number three?
Thank you.
All right, that will close our third and final public hearing. We will now move on to citizen participation, which is the opportunity for people to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes total.
Hi, my name is Monica Nelson and I'm here because I'm trying to obtain a liquor license so that I can bartend at my current, my current employment. I work for Tammy, Dops Bar. I was up for denial because of my record. I, prior to 2016, I had never been in trouble. In 2016, I got divorced and it really hit me hard and it took a toll on everything in my life. I was in trouble for a few years after that. I have my conviction from why I'm, you know, the, the charges I'm here for. It's been two years, over two years, two years and two months since I've been in trouble. I've been sober for what will be two years. Next month, August 8th, is my daughter's 16th birthday, that's when I got clean two years ago. I've really, really worked hard to better my life. I moved from Eau Claire, Wisconsin, where I was getting in trouble and just doing the wrong things, down here about seven or eight months ago. Tammy gave me a chance and I love her for it, I love my job. I, I'm in compliance with everything with my, I am on probation. I have, in my conviction, I have it approved by the judge, the district attorney, and my probation officer that I am allowed to work in an establishment that sells liquor, as long as it's in a employment capacity, I can be there. I, I have been, like I said, I've been sober, it'll be two years. I haven't been in any trouble. I, I don't even know who that person is anymore. I am ashamed of that, of that time in my life and I'm really trying to move forward and I really, really just need a break. I, I'm staying up to date on my restitution, all of everything that I was supposed to do with my probation. I also completed inpatient treatment two years ago up in Eau Claire Farm and Center. I was in outpatient treatment up there when I moved down here. I go to meetings, I've been trying to get into an outpatient treatment down here as well. And I just really, really, really hope that you guys find it in your hearts to approve my license because I love my job and I, it's been a long time since I've been comfortable somewhere and been able to just give my all and I work my butt off. And, and I know Tammy, Tammy would agree, I definitely, I would do anything for her and the job. I just, I'm, I'm not that person anymore and I just want everybody to see that, so.
Thanks very much. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening, besides Ed?
Citizen Ed Lysinski, 3364 South 119th Street. Thank you for the opportunity. And I'm going to read this so I don't screw this up, because my sister sent me some talking points. But this Friday night is the West Dallas New Berlin Relay for Life event. So Relay for Life is a community fundraising event for the American Cancer Society. The West Dallas New Berlin Relay has been in this community for 30 years and is run completely by volunteers and is the only community relay in Milwaukee County, so make sure you support us. In the last 10 years, the West Dallas New Berlin Relay has raised over $450,000 for the American Cancer Society. These funds support cancer research, 24-hour phone and online chat access to free cancer information, and local patient support programs such as rides to treatments. This year's Relay for Life takes place this Friday, July 16th, from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM at the West Dallas Athletic Complex, which is behind Nathan Hale High School, right out there on the football field. This is a family-friendly event and will be, and all in the community are welcome to come. Registration is encouraged but not required, so, you know, feel free to just show up anytime, pretty much. Relay team members take turns or relay for the entire event, but there are other activities which include, at 6:00 PM, we welcome all cancer survivors, whether in treatment, maintenance, or remission, to walk the official first lap together. All survivors will receive a survivor tee-shirt. If you haven't seen that, it's a, it's a great moment. You know, everybody that, that's on the track at that point is a, is a cancer survivor. Usually then the second lap, they bring along any caregivers to, to walk the second lap with them. And then the third lap, everybody's invited, so. At 9:00 PM, we light the track with luminaria bags to represent those who we remember and honor. So again, another very somber, powerful moment. The names of each person is read as we pause to reflect on why we relay. There's also silent auction, 50/50 raffle, a scavenger hunt, food, music, games. And, you know, you get to hang out with me for seven or eight hours, so. Again, you know, I encourage anybody, if you, if you get some time, especially come on out for that, that survivor lap and the opening ceremony is at 6 o'clock. Otherwise, you can also find us online, on Facebook, or on the American Cancer Society website. And you can also make donations there as well, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Citizen Ed. Anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? All right, we will conclude citizen participation and we will move to item F on our agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on the top of page two of your agendas. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. I just have a few things this evening. I want to thank all of the city staff that had their hand in putting together the Independence Day Parade. I want to thank the rec department and everybody who pulled together to make that happen. It was very obvious that people were excited to be out again and seeing other people and having festivities and celebrating the holidays. Same with the fireworks. Thank you to State Fair for letting us hold the fireworks in the grandstands. And it just felt really good to see people again. I'll just leave it at that. Two new businesses in our community had ribbon cuttings since our last council meeting. Couple of weeks ago, on 81st and National, there is a palette popsicle shop that opened up called Palette Natural Fruit. And they are right next door to where Flower Girl and Flame Pizza will be going later this year. And also, Layman Brewing, which opened during COVID and kind of had a non-traditional start to their business, had their ribbon cutting and their grand opening. And they are located in the old Cocapelli's on 60th and Madison. And they have the grill, they still have the wings and fish fries and food, but they also make their own beer. So I just want to welcome those two new businesses to the community. That does conclude my mayor's report this evening. Do we have any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigel?
I just want to remind everybody that we're just a few short weeks away from that happiest time of year. Wisconsin State Fair will be at State Fair Park, August 5th to the 15th. We will likely have about a million visitors to our community and I hope that everybody takes a little time to dress up your front yard, mow your lawn, make things neat. This is a, this is a day or a week or 11 days when a lot of people come to our city and their impression of West Dallas will be based partly on what, what they see here that week. So as always, you know, pick up the garbage in your neighborhood, mow the lawn, pull the weeds. If you've got a neighbor who's maybe struggling with taking care of their property, reach out and we can maybe find them some help. If you want to mow the lawn for them, that'd be great. But we're just a couple of weeks away from Wisconsin State Fair. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Yeah, Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
Yeah, I'm, Alderwoman Ranky and I are happy to report that here in Wisconsin, located in West Dallas, I had a ceremony earlier today, which Alderwoman Ranky and I attended. It was to commemorate the opening of their new mobile audiology clinic. A great big truck that can bring audiology services to anyone in Wisconsin. And that's exactly what they're doing, they're even going as far up north as I think Hurley, Wisconsin. And it is just a great expansion of service on their part. And Alderwoman Ranky got a cookie.
Mayor Devine, you wasn't supposed to tell the city attorney that I had a cookie.
And I'll, I'll report that the cookie is a representation of the Mobile Audiology Center, it's a truck.
And you didn't get one, Alderman Haas?
I'm jealous.
I brought one for you.
Oh, I thought you might have eaten yours. Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move for approval the minutes of June 23rd, 2021, special common council meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any changes to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Standing committee reports, the License and Health Committee, Alderperson Grisham?
Aye. Can we do a readout, Gina, for...
Do them now?
Yeah, can we do them now?
You can.
Okay.
You are.
You, thank you.
Entertainment premise, manufactured mobile homes, secondhand article jewelry dealers and food peddlers was approved. Do you want me to list who's on there? Okay. For public entertainment premise, we had Incredible Skate and Family Fun, manufactured mobile homes was for mobile estates of West Dallas.
Gina, you don't, you don't have to read everything.
Oh, okay, sorry. Next one, we also approved a, a new Class B tavern license application for Persona Bar. We also approved a, let's see, a new Class B tavern application for JD's Pub and Grill, a temporary Class B picnic license for St. Augustine Parish, and an amended premise extension for Double V's Barbecue. Also a temporary premise extension for Broken Star and approved the non-renewal of Slurp and Burp Fun Bar. And all of the licenses listed on page 13, item 2021-0486.
Mayor Devine, correction to Slurp and Burp. The owner, Robert Lucas', agent was not on time for the meeting and we are going to hear, and we, we are going to hear him and discuss that at recess. So that's item 9, 2021-0485. And we also have a separation due to a split vote on item 17, 2021-0536. And we did hear from the applicant during citizen participation, Monica Nelson, and that was a split vote.
For item 20?
That would be 2021-0536 would be item 17. New operators license bartender sales clerk application for Monica Nelson.
Oh, oh, I was looking at mine.
Is that item 20? Okay, I'm looking, I'm, I apologize, I'm looking at my license agenda here, not the main agenda.
Okay.
And the rest of the bartenders were approved as well.
So then, Alderperson Grisham, do you want to make a motion on the balance with the exception of the two that you read out?
Yes, I make a motion to approve, with the exception of item nine and, oh, well...
Mr. Lucas and Ms. Nelson.
Mr. Lucas and Ms. Nelson, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just want to synchronize everybody here.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have a motion to approve that. Is there any discussion on the balance of that committee report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And now we have item 20?
Mr. Chair?
Mayor Devine, if I may?
Oh, Attorney Decker?
Just for item nine, at this time, a motion to refer to committee would be in order.
Okay, make a motion to refer to committee.
Is it item nine or item 12?
12, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think it's 12 on our agenda, nine on the License and Health agenda.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, there's a motion to refer to committee, is there any objection? Okay, so moved. And now item 20.
And Mayor Devine, if I may, if I may. Monica Nelson pretty much shared what she shared with us in committee. And I believe one of the reasons that we flagged this and had her come in, besides the fact that initially I looked at it as a habitual criminality issue. Apparently, this conviction just happened as a result of two years ago. So she has been walking the straight and narrow. She has shown reasonable rehabilitation, which is something that we look at when we are voting upon these licenses, based on the state statutes. And I, I supported it and I believe Alderman Stefanski supported it and Roat and Ranky voted no on it. So that's where we came to a split vote on it.
So that comes out of committee with no action, so I would ask if anybody wants to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Am I allowed to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, the motion was to approve item 20, which was the license for Ms. Nelson. If there's no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Ranky?
No.
Roat?
No.
Stefanski?
Yes.
Tenorio?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Grisham?
Aye.
Haas?
No.
Keen?
Aye.
Lysick?
Aye.
Five to four?
I had six to three.
Six to three.
Six to three.
Six to three.
Six to three. Either way, motion carries. Okay, that does conclude then the License and Health Committee. And we go to item K.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
There's a motion with a second, I'll give it to Alderman Haas. By a hair. Any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, I will ask for a quick roll call.
Alderperson Ranky?
Aye.
Roat?
Aye.
Stefanski?
Aye.
Tenorio?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Grisham?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Keen? Lysick?
Aye.
Nine and one excused.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
There's a motion with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in recess.